Good evening, everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. May I have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Altono.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, May 5th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 6th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Does the Council have anything? Seeing none, we will move on to Presentations. C1, Subject: Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022 Annual Report by Chief Kalinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you is our annual report, prepared by the Finance Department that shows the activity for the Measure R program that was here, approved here by the Galt voters on November 4th, 2008, by ordinance and codified in the Galt Municipal Code, Chapter 3.40. Measure R provides funding for police services beyond expenditures for police services that were reflected in the 2007 and '08 budget, all programs and functions and operations of the Galt Police Department, including hiring, additional police personnel, recruitment and retention of police officers, enhancing youth, anti-gang and anti-drug programs, improving police training, purchasing police equipment, enhancing graffiti abatement, and increasing the police present in the city of Galt neighborhoods, parks, and schools. Currently, the Measure R revenues pay for 10.5 positions, and that is going to be in last fiscal year. As you know, you added additional CSO position for this. It's not reflected in this. Annual report will be next year. In any case, it includes our patrol officers, a gang detective, school resource officer, professional standards officer, dispatcher, records technician, analyst, and other police service program costs. Ordinance 2008-4 provides program guidance for Measure R, including directing the city to provide an independent audit by a certified public accounting CPA firm. CPA firm of Lance Stoll &amp; Longard, LLP, issued a clean report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022, stating that the financial statements for the city of Galt, including Measure R, present fairly the revenues and expenditures for the year. The audited financial schedule of revenue expenditures and changes in the fund balance and the public safety Measure R is attached to this annual report. In summary, the sales tax, driven a lot by the price of gas, went up this last year. Overall, it was 27.3% higher than budget. It came in at $2.381 million, and our total expenditures are $2.313 million. So we're generally expending all funds allocated to us. Actual expenditures were 10.48 less than budget due to personnel savings and some capital equipment that carried forward. Ending fund balance of, as of June 30th, was $1.85502, and that was an increase of $131,651 for the year. There were two Measure R meetings that occurred during the year. The first on November 11th, 2021. The second meeting occurred on April 27th, 2022. As you know, we're scheduled to have quarterly meetings, but when we don't have a quorum, we can't hold the meeting. So we were unable to hold the other two meetings. We did lose one of our board members, unfortunately, during this time, and so it caused us a problem with staffing or making sure we had a quorum. In any case, the third page of this is from the financial report provided by Matt Boring's team, which I believe is also in the audited financial report, correct? And so that's page three of this report. This item was reviewed last week with the, last Wednesday, with the Measure R committee. We asked Mr. Brosman, who was there for his first meeting, and our other committee member, if they were interested in presenting this. They deferred to us, as that's happened several times in my 10 years here. And as you know, as of April 30th, the remaining members term out, and so the city clerk is working on getting new members for the program for our July meeting. And so with that, I submit the annual report for council's consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions or comments by city council?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Thank you, Chief, for that. I had, I did have one question, which you partially answered, but I just wanted to kind of say that it is disappointing that we didn't have the meetings that we wanted to, and I understand completely why. And I think this is another example of how we need to stress the importance of these commissioning committees. I mean, this Measure R committee is an oversight, which is very critical. And the fact that we have people that, you know, I understand people can't make meetings, it happens, but if you're going to apply for such a position, I mean, a quorum is three, that means that we're missing, you know, that means, that means that three people are missing. I mean, there could have been a vacancy, but we, we need to just, you know, as we, as we turn that corner now and get more applicants for this committee, we need to make sure these people understand the magnitude of how important it is that they show up to these, because if they're not, then they need to just not apply. It's disappointing that we only had two meetings. So I wanted to state that. A second thing is, I, I understand that we deferred. I, I would like to see in the future, moving forward, the, the committee chair be the one to present. I know in this case, they deferred to you, so I, I get that, but I, I think it's important because for the, the purpose of the Oversight Committee is to say, you know, we are, you know, we, we reviewed the, the information, and we concur that it is legal and everything is being done, you know, as, as dictated by the municipal code regarding Measure R. And for a committee member to stand up and say, "I, the chair of the committee, such and such, I'm here to present this report to the council. I and my peers have reviewed it," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I know it might seem like semantics, but I think it is very important. I know the Planning Commission does it, the Beautification Committee does it, the Commission on Aging does it, and then these committees, not to take any weight away from them, I feel like are not nearly as important as the Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure R. So I would like the committee to really heavily consider that as you guys move forward in your meetings, so that be the case next time.
And councilmember, what we'll do when we appoint a chair and vice chair for the new cycle, we'll let them know that our expectation is if they take that chair or vice chair role, that they'll present the annual report. So if they sign up for it, they're
Thank you.
A guest committed.
I appreciate that. And then, just to say, I was happy to see that, you know, the fund performing so well, nearly $2.5 million, which, if I'm correct, is 2.4 something, but very happy to see that. Makes me feel very optimistic for our other tax measure. The only other thing is, and I don't know if this is possible, but it would be nice to, in the future, that this report that's included, I know it's an audited piece, I don't have it in front of me, but I was looking at it. It just kind of says, you know, here's what we started with, here's what we spent, here's what's left. I mean, there's no itemization. I know I can go back and look at the budget and dig all through that, but just for, I guess for transparency with the public, if the public was to go and look at this item and say, "Oh, there's the Measure R annual report." I want to pull that up, and I want to just see what that money was spent on, just some sort of breakdown a little bit. This is what the money was spent on that year, because as a public, it's very, just very generic, and they couldn't then, you know, they have to then go back and dig through the budget themselves and, and find out what they were. So that was just something I just would like to see.
No, I, I agree with you, and I'm curious, I didn't think about it earlier, but if the public was curious, all those line items are discussed in the meetings, I mean, I know we're supposed to have more of them, but they are discussed, and I, I do agree with Mr. Farmer, that it would be nice if a, not a super detailed, but a better breakdown of what was spent. So, because if someone's going to look it up, generally, they're going to look up council meetings in Measure R and stuff like that.
And so, yes, we can do that. Second of all, if we miss a meeting, like, let's say, third quarter, and we come to fourth quarter, we do re, review the third quarter and the fourth quarter at the next meeting we hold, so there isn't a quarter that goes by that, we don't generally talk about it, but the moving number is the latest report. So if you miss quarter three, we may tell you about it, but you really care about quarter four, because it's the most up-to-date information current, right? But we do cover that in this report, and this report was approved by the committee to come to you, these three pages, so they've seen this. But we will add that additional information.
Thank you. And then my last one comment was, and this, this might be, if somebody doesn't answer, have an answer for me right now, I can maybe just, Mr. Heinz could circle back to me or Mr. Boring, but I know there's a lot of lingo. When I was, when I was kind of looking through the municipal code regarding Measure R, just trying to see what exactly it said about the presentation, and it really doesn't say, you know, what should be presented or what shouldn't be presented, it's just very generic, and that's why I think it's up to the council to kind of set that policy. But it does refer to, there's a lot of talk about the expenditure plan, and I know we do a budget, and I'm assuming, just, I'm assuming that that's part of this, but it, it also says, you know, it just talks, there's a lot of lingo about, you know, an expenditure plan being formed, and then everything being spent based on that expenditure plan, and then the review, the annual review, the verbiage says, you know, that the funds are expended in accordance with the police services expenditure plan. I mean, that's the exact verbiage. So I, I, I don't know, I know there was a lot of talk last year, year before, about some gray areas with Measure R, and I don't want to revisit all that, but it's just, want to make sure that we are, I mean, there is a expenditure plan, is maybe a piece of the budget or separate from the budget, that says, this is what we're planning on exactly spending money for Measure R, we're forecasting, right?
There is a, I developed a memo back in December 2020 with the assistance of the then-city attorney. It lays out our analysis of Measure R, and the expenditure plan is included. And as, the expenditure plan essentially is what was budgeted during the time that Measure R was implemented, and so as long as we're staying true to that level of effort, then, you know, we've met the, we've met the, the needs or the requirements of the Act. So, but I'll have to go back and review the memo, but I'll be happy to redistribute that memo out to council. There was a fair amount of controversy over Measure R during my initial months here, and so we hopefully cleared that up with the memo. But in the memo, we address the expenditure plan and its relationship to our current spending levels.
Right. I'm just trying to clarify that there is a, I understand that the expenditures above the original budget, I know, yeah. I was referring, I was just referring to that there is, and I, I'm assuming there is, that this is like, you know, in our, in our budget process, that this is how much we're going to spend from general fund, and then here's what we're planning on spending on a Measure R, right?
In the, in the cot, in the codification of the code itself, it lays out the officers, the expenditures, and so when Measure R, the Measure R was, budget was initially built, it was built to mimic what was in the code.
Okay.
And it has grown from there. And as long as it maintains that level of effort, we're okay. But that level of effort is always present in Measure R budget.
All right. Thank you for that question. That's all I had, and I just want to thank the people that are on the Measure R committee for, for taking the effort to do that. So that's, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano? If there's no comment, do I have a motion to approve the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022 Annual Report as presented?
To approve.
Moved by Mr. Papano, seconded by Rich Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Is there any public comment on this item?
Not on this item.
Thank you. Could you read the public comment statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda.
Do we have any public comment this evening?
We have four public comments.
Thank you.
Belinda Ellis.
I just want to give you all an update of what's going on with the cemetery, so that when people contact you, as I think that they are, you have something to tell them. We open the Saturday before Easter from 9:00 a.m. to noon. We'll be open again the Saturday before Mother's Day, May 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. I'm aware this is not ideal. We look forward to when we can be open on the weekends again. Currently, the conditions in the cemetery are not safe for people to be out there. This time, our gates are open from 9:00 to 3:00, Monday through Friday. People have short memories. I still remember January 7th like it was yesterday. I've spent many hours cleaning up, and it's sunny now, well, maybe not today, but people want to be back outside again, and we're not staying closed to hurt their feelings, we're not staying closed to cause them, we're staying closed out of safety. We have a lot of holes, there's a lot of sinkholes, there is damage in the cemetery. I'm actively working with FEMA at this time. This is a very slow process, but we are moving forward. FEMA has visited the Hicksville Cemetery in Arna Road and documented the downed trees and debris. They will visit again to discuss the damage to the sprinkler system that took place out there. FEMA has visited the Galt Cemetery two times already, boots on the ground, walking the cemetery. We lost a total of 27 trees in the Galt Cemetery. Ten were lost at Hicksville. FEMA has also been out to document the extensive damage to the sprinkler system. The general consensus is the extensive, the existing sprinkler system cannot be repaired and needs to be abandoned and replaced. I've met with contractors to take care of this, but currently, we're waiting on FEMA funds before we can proceed. The weather's changing, and we are not having our weekly heavy rainstorms, so they're going to begin drying out relatively quickly. Again, working with FEMA, we are trying to procure some temporary water systems. We should have an answer to that this week. We are going to work our hardest to keep the cemetery green. Memorial Day is going to proceed as normal, as normal as we can. The Memorial Day event is scheduled for May 29th at 10:00 a.m. I am happy to talk with anyone who wants to know and understand what's going on at the cemetery. Currently, the trees are cleaned up, and the damage is underground and cannot be seen. There are still a number of sinkholes, and when we drive the equipment over the ground, there is still ground that sinks beneath us. We are having to be very cautious in the cemetery. Services are still being held in the veterans' area and will be for some time. I do not have a date as to when we will return to services at the graveside or regular hours. I appreciate your patience, I appreciate the patience if you, when you talk to people. People are very angry over this, and I'm very sorry. We cannot make things go hap, go faster. We've had many very negative comments directed toward us, towards us, and we are doing our, our best that we can, and we are moving forward as fast as we can. Unfortunately, people cannot see the damage, because the trees are gone, and it's sunny. They think we should be back to normal, and we're not. So I appreciate the support that you have all shown to me and to the people that have contacted you on our behalf. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
From 9:00 to noon, yes.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to all of you. Left last meeting, really kind of upset, to be honest with you. And tonight, I'm going to talk, may I ask that the city council develop a referendum aimed towards, that will preserve the citizens of Galt's intent to use the Measure Q revenues to supplement the current used general funds. Often, I hear Parks and Rec is subsidized from general funds, yet I never hear the police department is subsidized from general funds. I never hear that the other departments are subsidized by general funds. Currently, our revenues, we spend about 12% of our general funds aims towards Parks and Rec. Yet I get an impression that not all of you agree that the general funds should be spent on Parks and Rec. In fact, I send emails to all of you, and I appreciate every one of your feedbacks. But all of you have a different idea in regards to the continued use of the general funds that are being spent. When Measure Q is sold to the citizens of Galt by all five of you, and I sat through a lot of those meetings as well, the council's own resolution of 202264 stated, "The purpose was to expand on Parks and Rec and to prioritize revenues generated for Parks and Rec." Nowhere in that resolution, or in Measure Q, does it say to fund, fund the expansion of other departments. Yet this is becoming true, as in the last city council meeting. Decisions, in my mind, are now being made to subsidize other departments with Parks and Rec general funds. This meeting included the reallocation or movement, shall game, $341,000 one-time expense, the movement of $438,000 in Fund 32, the movement of $131,000 in Fund 33, and the movement of $55,000 in Fund 37, all to Measure Q. This represents a total of $967,000, guys. It is coming out of Measure Q funds. Having reached out to all of you, I can say some of you are not fully committed to continuing to fund Parks and Rec with the current general fund dollars. I do know that Measure Q is going to roll into general fund. Hopefully, we have a separate account, so we can audit it in the future as well. I appreciated the last time that you at least left the $1,005,000 from the '06 fund in the '23-'24 budget. If this goes away, really, the only increase to Parks and Rec will be right around $1,000,000, guys. A $1,000,000 will have become, hey, Galt landscaping looks a little bit better, and another $1,000,000 will never achieve the expansion of the ball fields that we've talked about, the remodel of the Chobolo Center that we've talked about, the catching up of maintenance that has been deferred for the last 10 years. Tonight, I ask the council to decide what your legacy, what you came up with, when you came up with Measure, this measure, was meant to be. The overhauling of the Parks and Rec is a long-term project. It's not going to just rest with you five and how you decide, but you're laying the groundwork for it today. Now is the time to make a plan on what general fund dollars are going to be allocated towards Parks and Rec in the future, and we already know Measure Q dollars are going to be allocated toward Parks and Rec in the future. I thank you for your time, guys. I really would love to see a plan.
Thank you very much.
Bob Bowley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council members, staff, chief. As promised, I, you have in your hot little hands the revised Galt Commission on Aging Resource Guide, and I want to just briefly point out the major changes that I've made to this. I've added on page II, underneath the contact to city council members, city of Galt departments, so that if seniors have questions pertaining to the different departments, there's a contact number right there at the fingertips, so that prevents them from having to call you directly and you having to refer them to this page. Hopefully, that works that way. And the other item, other two items that I want to point out are, I've added and expanded 211 Resources page on page 11. I, I thank Mayor Jay Vandenberg for his input on this matter, and I hope it satisfies your question that you had for me about this. And basically, what this page does, it breaks down the 211 resources by categories such as caregiving, consumer assistance, financial resources, food clothing, blah, 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 all the way down. So when they come out, when they go call 211, they have a problem, they can say, "Oh, yeah, this, this is about health services," and they can give them, the, the inquirer can give, can get the right person to talk to. And last but not least, we have two major supporters of the Commission on Aging, both financially and, and generally. The first one is page 13, which is Galt Waste, Cal Waste. They have a public statement about what's going on with regards to the separation of, of the garbage and the other things, lawn and garden trimming and so on and so forth. And on page, the last page is SMD. We have an MOU with SMD, and this is their opportunity to shine for the public as well. So I hope you enjoy it, and I hope it, it serves you well, and thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much for all your hard work, sir. Appreciate it.
Ken Lee.
Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Bob, could, and, and maybe this is for staff also, you're the, you're representing on behalf of the Commission on Aging tonight. Would it be possible, far enough in advance, to get you on the agenda so that you're not doing this in public comment?
That would be a dream come true for me.
Can you work with staff, your staff representative, to organize it next time so that we can have a discussion about this item?
Okay.
Not that I have a bunch of questions about it, but I just think it is a little, it would be a little more appropriate that our, that one of our commissions is presenting on an agenda as opposed to
Okay. The same as we just did with Measure R.
Yeah. I'll, I'll work with the, the new chair of the Commission on Aging and work with my liaison people, very capable people, to get that accomplished. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Ken Lee of Galt Apartments Senior Place. I'd like to bring up a David and Goliath problem in Galt. That's the residents versus Walmart noise, and I've been concerned. Having battled noise from a commercial car dealership behind my house for over five years in Antioch, and having battled an events hall in the town of Thornton for over three years blasting their music, they violated specific conditions that were put on them, and so the remedy for that was, they haven't been able to use the hall for over four years, and up to now, they still haven't been able to use the hall. I'm sure when Walmart began their building, there were specific conditions to minimize noise problems to the residents. The Costco and San Leandro are but residential properties just like Walmart. They have gates restricting trucks between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00. They have signs posted on their sound walls every 30 feet stating, "Be respectful to the residents, no noise." If noise was a problem to the residents, Costco would double or triple pane the windows, and that would, you know, reduce the noise. Costco also has a, a person to respond to their problems, a dedicated person. Walmart passes the blame on the noise to independent truck Walmart passes the blame on the noise to independent truck drivers. They say Walmart truck drivers don't cause the problem. Where's the security at night? Having a high sound wall and the building walls, it creates a sound tunnel. It makes sound reverberate between the wall and the building. And when the wind comes down, the idling can go into the houses because the wind blows sideways, and so the idling smell doesn't go straight up. In Thornton, they have no idling signs in their town, and I had them installed because there is idling laws in the state of California. So I would like, I would place specific conditions before considering the new annex. Solve existing problems first before creating new problems. No company exempt from being a responsible, good neighbor. Make them stop and address the residents' concerns now. So install truck entrance gates and at a minimal expense to Walmart. Gates don't cost that much. Have them park out in the parking lot where there are no residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we move on to reports by city council members, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papinow.
Last Thursday was the air quality district meeting, and the only two events really discussed was an overview of the Spare the Air program, which is firing up again now that we're getting into the spring and summer. And anything on that can be found on their website. And then we did the first public hearing of the proposed budget, in which we're still in deficit due to the unfunded state and federal liabilities. However, there was a, quite a surplus that was built up during the pandemic, and we're kind of still living off that. So there won't be too many big fee increases this year.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer.
Nothing to report this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I had a SACOG board meeting a week and a half ago, and we met at the Boys and Girls Club in Roseville. It was quite an interesting place. It was an old youth center before, and the Roseville City partnered with the Boys and Girls Club of Auburn and have a beautiful facility there for their kids. We also approved the draft budget and overall work plan. SACOG is going to take in about $36.5 million in revenue this year, and much of that is going to, is passed through. As you know, we jurisdictions are awarded grants and other funding through SACOG, so much of that is passed through. We also talked about land use assumptions for the blueprint that's coming out, and it was quite, quite interesting, looking at three different pathways for that and determining, not even determining anything, but really just kind of getting a sense of what each of those pathways will mean as we move forward with our long-range transportation and housing plan. And then Roseville did also talk about a community-based collaborative they have there, working together with nonprofits and private businesses and other companies, including healthcare organizations, and revitalization of their old part of town that they've done over the last six years to build community and really increase the ability for folks to get around when they weren't able to before. And so they always have, they always have an ongoing process in which they look at these different communities that need a little bit of additional help. What they have found is that they found that just looking at data isn't always the best way to approach things, and the data sometimes is not even accurate. So they do listening sessions pretty regularly. So I just want to mention also that SACOG staff will be out at the Saturday Market this weekend, asking residents what their thoughts and ideas are on transportation and housing related to Galt. So I would encourage everyone to, when you're out there, because I know you all are going to be out there, stop by and give your input. It's real important. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. I have nothing to report. And with that, we move on to the information and consent calendar. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. It is recommended that...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a statement before this consent calendar. Item number F3, due to my rear interest adjacent to the site number 18, it may be conflict of interest, or it may be not conflict of interest, but I am out of abundance of cautions. I will be recusing myself from considering of this item. And my vote on the consent calendar for this item, there'll be abstention. So I'm now leaving here. Thank you.
So my understanding is that we will move forward per regular process, but the city clerk will write down an abstention from Vice Mayor on that particular item, correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, so it is recommended that items 1 through 3 be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the city council members. Is there any separate questions or actions by the city council? Seeing none, I look for a motion to receive file warrants for period ending April 19, 2023, two minutes of the regular meeting for April 18, 2023, and three, 2021-2029, Housing Element 18, Rezone, and Municipal Code Update, and a mitigation negative declaration that has been prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA. Do I have a motion? So moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, I guess, except for F3. There's no scheduled matters of public hearing, so we move on to the regular calendar. First item is the City Manager Resolution approving updated salary schedule for unrepresented management employees and authorization to amend the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual budget. Mr. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pass this item on to our Finance Director, Matt Boring, who will present it.
Good evening. The item tonight is to update the salary schedules, including two years of salary adjustments for the unrepresented management employees, and authorizing the City Manager to amend the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget to fund the salary changes. Just to overview the whole process, in early 2022, the city hired a consultant to perform a citywide base salary study in preparation of MOU negotiations with the bargaining groups. In October of, October 18, 2022, and November 1, 2022, City Council approved success for MOUs with three bargaining units. The MOUs contain three-year salary adjustments from fiscal year 2022-23 through fiscal year 2024-25, and included a minimum salary increase of 2% per year and additional salary increases for job classifications that were below the market median. In November 15, City Council approved two-year salary adjustments for unrepresented professional, confidential, and mid-management employees, and included the same minimum 2% salary increase and additional market salary adjustments based on that same citywide salary survey. And they approved a 2% salary increase for unrepresented management employees in July 1, 2022. And council has now directed staff to prepare a resolution to approve salary schedules for updates for unrepresented management employees. That include the salary adjustments for two years with effective dates of May 8, 2023, and May 6, 2024, and those dates were adjusted to coincide with the beginning of a pay period. The fiscal impact, the total increase to the general fund is $66,148, for a citywide total of $74,965 for the two-year period. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Boring?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions. I just wanted to... There was, to me, the staff report was, I mean, we all, all of us that were in the closed sessions for multiple times and, you know, came to, came to the decision we did, obviously was, we're all privy to that, but the public is not. And now that this is a public document, I think it's important that, when you just read the staff report, I think there's some key information, I think, that is missing out of here, so I wanted to just reiterate that to you, Mr. Boring. If you could just clarify a couple things. That way, we have, you know, on record of what exactly we're doing here. And also, too, I have a request to include a piece of information that's missing from the staff report, if it could be added to the archive or whatever, what have you, after... The first is, so, so this, this increase is based on the salary study that was completed in April 2022 that we used and applied to the other city employees, bargaining units, everybody else that preceded the unrepresented management. That's correct?
Correct. All of the full-time salary schedules.
Okay. And in that, in that, they, for the public listening, the salary study comes up with what, a median income for these certain positions and evaluates what the median income is for a particular job title, and, and then what we did for the other employees and bargaining units, I think they were all consistent, but I can't speak to if they were or not, but we were bringing them within a certain percentage of those median numbers.
Correct. The salary survey takes our job script, or our job titles, and looks at the job description. And there's 12 or 13 comparator agencies that we use for the, the survey, and so they compare job titles to find similar responsibilities and compare the salaries. And then based on those responses, the median is, you know, the middle of that.
Right. So, so for example, if we said for a particular bargaining unit that we were going to bring everybody within, say, 5% of whatever that figure was, then depending on what those positions were for those particular employees, job descriptions, and their titles, they were brought within a percentage. So if one person was, let's say, I don't know, 7% underpaid, then they would get a 2% bump because we're bringing them within 5. That's, that's how, that's how it works when we use these salary studies. Correct?
Correct. So in that case, if we brought them within 5%, they would get the 2% per year because that's the minimum. So if someone was, say, 20%, and we brought them within 5, then they would get that 15% broken out over the, the three years of the agreement.
Correct. So in this case, the specific case with the unrepresented management, what was, what the staff report, and it doesn't specifically state that, and that's why I just want to reiterate it publicly, is what was agreed upon is that we are going to be increasing, we're bringing, we're bringing these unrepresented management employees to within 9% of the salary study figures. Is that correct?
9% of the median.
9% of the median. Correct. Yes. And that figure is then amortized over a three-year period, and then, I use the word amortize, whatever figure, and then we are going to be using the first two years of that. So for example, let's say that someone was deemed 18% under the median, which would mean we're bringing them with the 9%, which means they're going to get a 9% salary increase. But that 9% salary increase would be broken over three years, so roughly 3% per year, and we're doing the first two years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so that, that's just what I wanted to clarify that we were doing, because it doesn't say any of that in the report. It does mention about the two years, but it doesn't talk about the percentage. And if, you know, the public were to look at this, they don't really understand what exactly we did here. The part that was missing, too, that I would like to see added is, there's, there's just a graph that says this is what the new, this is what the new salaries are that the employees are being paid, but it doesn't show what they previously were being paid. I know that information is available online somewhere, but it doesn't show that, so there's no reference point. And we also don't have the salary study. And I know that salary study was, is a public, you know, should be a public document at this point, so if someone was to, you know, if a member of the public was to go and look at the staff report and say, well, what's, I would, you know, that document should be, should be made public. And am I correct, Mr. Splendario, we, that is a public document, correct?
The subject of a public records act request, so it's public.
Okay. So I just asked my constituents if, if we could just, one, if we could just have the clerk add after the meeting, you know, just to the official records, that salary study be accompanied with the staff report for future reference by the public, and also some verbiage, I don't care if it's a one-line or whatever, that basically these, this increase that we're showing on page 34 and 35 represents a 9% to the, to within the median, some verbiage describing what that we did there with that. I'm just looking for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. It's, I see it's similar to what we just discussed with Measure R, that we're just trying to, so if someone looks it up, generally, they look at city council meetings, and they'll find the information they're hopefully searching for. Anybody else?
The word...
I'm amending the agenda to add information that's already public.
The agenda, not the...
Well, the, sorry.
Resolution.
No, good, no, no, staff report. That's a good clarification. Thank you.
Okay, because I thought we were talking about trying to change a resolution.
No, no.
No, no, no.
I just want the additional information to be added.
Well, yeah, and I think what you're really saying is to supplement the agenda packet with this information. I mean, we can put information that's published, sometimes we put information that's given at the meeting and publish it in a folder for later received items. That goes into the city council website in a folder for that meeting. Obviously, we can't amend it in the face of the agenda because that's obviously been done and set today, but we can add documents for, that people will be able to find for this meeting that were prepared as part of the agenda packet. I think that's what you're asking for, to supplement the agenda documents for this so that you can see those documents.
Okay.
Yes.
That's exactly, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Would that be okay? Okay. All right. With that, I don't have any other comment. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is any other comment or questions from council? Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, just a comment. I, I think that, you know, there may be some people asking, well, if you did three years for everybody else, why two for this group? And I just want to make it, make it said that my thought is that after the two years or prior to the two years expiring, that we're going to go back and reevaluate that. What, what that, what that will look like for this, for this bargain, or for this group of employees, not necessarily, you know, just doing the two, the two years, although that's what we're deciding tonight, but I think the intent is to reevaluate it at that point.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions? Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving the updated salary schedule, including the two years of salary adjustment for the unrepresented management employees, and two, authorizing the City Manager to amend the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget to fund salary changes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Papinow.
Second.
Seconded in by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
No. Motion passes four to one. Next is Parks and Recreation Department, C, was it H2? Anyway, subject is Market Plastic Bags. Agenda report by Armando Solis.
Do you mean, City Council, I'd like to bring up Jackie Garcia to provide the staff
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Today, I will be presenting to you regarding the Galt Market plastic bag concerns that were brought up and discussion. On February 21, it was directed, first... On February 21st, it was directed, First Staff, to research the plastic bag usage at the Galt Flea Market, and ways on how to reduce the bags during flea market operations. The concerns that were given were plastic bags were not discarded properly, they were being littered on the streets, the waterways, trees, nearby neighborhood properties as well. Current plastic bags were being used that are not recyclable, but are often placed in recyclable bins. These are the plastic bags that we were referenced, so those are the ones that we were referring to. And these are some photos that were captured as we did the research, these are not plastic bags, what we're finding are, are more of the Amazon cardboard packaging wrapping of items from our vendors. We also did some research with other comparable flea markets, San Jose, which is a comparable flea market, had no policy or programs related to banning plastic bags, Denios had no policy as well, and Delta Flea Market had no other policy or program that they did related to banning plastic bags. So at this time, we're asking for discussion of the banning of the plastic bags and providing staff direction on how you would like us to move forward.
Any questions from council? Mr. Farmer?
Go ahead, Mr. Lozano, you go first.
I just have a quick question, and, and it's been, I think, some time since we discussed putting this on the agenda, and I know it came from someone up here, so excuse me for, but can someone give me a little bit of background about why, why we have this on the agenda? I don't know who brought it up.
Yeah, it was me.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, so, I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate staff bringing this on the agenda, I know it's, you know, we have a lot of important business we conduct, and, you know, this was, was put on when it could, and I'm happy to see it on here, and so, the reason I brought this forward was, and I appreciate the staff, you know, doing the research you did and, and coming forth with what information you have, I think it's no secret, you know, my personal feelings about trying to keep the city of Galt looking better, I think, you know, I, and with the support of the other four of my constituents here, have done some things that have made a big impact, one being the litter abatement position, which has made a huge impact in the community, but I think, I think all of us have expressed our interest in trying to do things that we can to make the city better. This, this idea came from the fact that I do live close to the market, and I see, when I drive, I drove by there today, and I drive by the market quite often, and there's a great amount of, of garbage, specifically plastic bags, that do exit the market grounds. I first want to do say to Parks and Rec staff and Mr. Solis, that you guys put your best foot forward, and you do work very hard to mitigate this problem to the extent of going into people, into the neighborhoods, like on Glendale and Melody, and, and picking up stuff out of people's front yards, and even, we had some incidents where we had some very unhappy citizens come forward and complained about things blowing into their backyards, which is quite frequently, especially on windy days, and you guys were like, well, hey, here's a phone number, you know, if you need us to come back, we'll have staff go in there and take care of it, and such, so I do want to say I appreciate all that, but I think, I want to state that, you know, these bags, and I think it's no secret if anybody's been paying attention, these bags are like a complete threat to the environment, and I'm not bringing this item forward because I'm, you know, some, on some tree hugging crusade, because that's, that's not really what it's about, for me, it's about trying to keep the city cleaner, and I'm dedicated to that. I think the market is by far the sole largest producer of plastic bags, I had a conversation with Cal Waste about this, and, you know, we're basically talking about the bags that were shown up there, I actually brought an example, so the kind of bags that I'm not talking about would be like this bag from Walmart, this is a bag that's technically reusable, whether or not you throw it away or it's not, but this is a recyclable bag. The bag that I'm referring to would be something like this, and no offense to Marshalls, the only one that I could find on hand, but this is a flimsy, non-reusable, non-recyclable bag that is similar to a lot of the ones that are used at the market, they're handed out, you know, by the vendors for many things, and these are not recyclable items, when they get there, when they get to Cal Waste, whether they're, you know, whether our staff is able to mitigate and pick up, you know, 90% of that, or 80% or whatever, or 100%, if that's, if that's even possible, of these bags that blow out into the neighborhoods, when it gets to Cal Waste, it's not recyclable, so these are all, you know, they're, they're going to landfill, and, and not only that, but I had a statement from Cal Waste today, from one of the representatives that I spoke with briefly, that these things jam their machines up, it's very time sensitive, or time consuming to, to stop the machines and dig these things out, they, they are very much not a fan of these types of bags, and so, I, I just feel like, you know, we can't control the rest of the bags, and this, I know I've had a discussion a while back with Mr. Splendario about California laws regarding bags and things like this, and for us to, you know, go on some big thing and say we're trying to ban these types of bags from the entire community would be a very lengthy process, but what we can do is we can control what we do at our own business, and that business is the Galt Market. I know there was some concern, Mr. Solis, about vendors, you know, being upset with this and saying, well, we're not going to come back and sell at the Galt Flea Market because, as was showed, there's some other cities that have no policies regarding this, but frankly, to be honest with you, Stockton, Denios, San Jose, if I was to make a list of cities that I think are good examples of keeping their city clean, it wouldn't be the three of those by a long shot, so, I mean, I'm not looking to follow suit, I'm looking to make policy and set an example for other communities. I think looking at some kind of plan to phase these types of bags out of our usage by our vendors is not a monumental task, I think it'd be very simple, I think we could leverage the time that our staff spends going out in these neighborhoods and cleaning up these bags and things against providing maybe some reusable bags, or recyclable bags at the, at the two gates or the three gates that we have coming in, and then, and then encourage people to use their own, and then completely just phase out of that until we come to, you know, bring your own kind of thing. I don't think it's unreasonable to, to, to look at something like this, I think it would be a good gesture by this council, and, like I said, these things blow in the trees, on windy days, they get caught up in the trees, your staff, no matter what they do, they're never going to get them out of the trees, my daughters used to live on Melody, we'd have five or six bags in the back, in the trees in the backyard all the time, and they're just never going to come down, so, anyways, that's the gist of it, I know I went a little long on that, but I just wanted to kind of paint a larger picture here, and so, I did look on Amazon, and I know this is just a quick rabbit hole I went down, you know, recyclable bags are roughly around 10 cents a piece, if we were to provide them, if we were to provide, say, at our cost of, say, 1,000 bags a day, which is, I think, a really hefty number, you know, we're spending about $100 a day at the market that we would have to front, but I think we could easily offset that $100 with, with the time saved by staff of having to go out and pick up, you know, possibly 20 or 30% less garbage or whatever, so.
Counsel, that's my, my pitch.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Any other counsel questions? So, I have a couple, you mentioned in your presentation that mostly those are not bags in the pictures that are, were shown in the presentation, correct? So, and these are more from the vendors than they are the people, right?
So, we have, when the customers are purchasing, they'll unload all their packages out when they're loading their items, so they'll leave it outside, and then that'll litter the parking lots, the streets, and it's more of the packaging.
Okay, so, it's, one of my favorite sayings about safety is, safety's only important as long as it's convenient, I have found it to be the most accurate safety saying, even though my bosses don't like it. Saying that is, you know, I think maybe a good suggestion would be to, to warn the vendors in a kind way, but then supply them with garbage cans, so when they're unpackaging things, there's not an excuse for them to not put it somewhere where it belongs, it might save a lot, it'd be worth a try, it's something even, I think, I like the idea, put it that way, so, and I agree with Mr. Farmer, I think, you know, with the cleanup person that we hired to walk around the city, we're very committed to having a clean city, we have graffiti abatement, it's obviously a priority for the city, I don't see why it should change here. I think it's very hard to get rid of plastic bags, if it was only $100 a day for two days out of the, you know, the week, each time we run, run the market, I think that would be a worthy cause to try and cut down, I don't know that truly recyclable bag is, you know, I guess I'm asking, is, do you think it's heavier, that it won't fly away, or it's, you know, it's not, it's mostly packaging, right, so, I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but...
Well, I don't know what packaging we're talking about, because you can see in the pictures all those white things, I mean, I know those kinds of bags because, like I said, I've fished them out of my family's backyards, and I've tried out of trees and stuff, and I can tell you every bag I've ever cleaned up, or had, you know, I had a gentleman come into my business with a whole garbage bag full of them and said, these are the ones that were collected out of my yard over the course of, I don't know, 18 months, and they were all the types of bags I'm talking about, so I don't know, I, I mean, I just would, I would like to, you know, they're the white flimsy bags that blow around, those are not recyclable bags, I don't understand why...
Yeah, and they're, they're very flighty, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, yeah.
May I comment?
Sure.
I'm the one who took those pictures, and that's, those are filling, you open up a shoebox and you see that white paper, you'll see that some of those pieces are clear. If you're trying to cut down on the effort for us to, in our work effort, it's not going to happen, if you're trying to keep the neighborhoods cleaner, it probably isn't going to happen by, by not allowing us to use those bags, if you want us to recycle, say that, and we can easily recycle and go into a program and bring back, bring forth a cost to you. I, I just don't want you to think that, by banning these bags, the outside of the market grounds will be cleaner.
Right, and that's why I brought up the point that she mentioned, that it's most of what, I mean, I assumed you guys are talking about, you know, the, you're looking at the garbage cans or whatever you pick up, and that's obviously not all, I'm sure there is, you know, those really flimsy bags, but most of it's packaging, and that's why I suggest the garbage cans, do you think that would help at all? Do you, do you think if you had a repeat offender vendor, you could, you know, find them or something else, or address it directly?
The vendors are currently, if they do not pick up their space and leave their space clean, they are cited and fined up to $100 and up to suspension, a lot of the trash that you're seeing here are from customers who are purchasing things, going to their vehicle, unpacking it out of the bulky back, boxes, and putting it in their vehicles, so that, so there is no really somebody to find because they're in their vehicle and gone.
Garbage cans in the parking lot?
There are garbage cans in the parking lot.
I, I have struggled to, I'm sorry, but, you know, I, I go by the market when it's over, and I see the amount of garbage and stuff that's inside the market that blows up against the fences, I have a hard time believing that's all customers, it has to be from vendors as well, I mean, as you know, Mr. Solis, you guys go in there with leaf blowers, which I can hear all the way from my house every night, blowing garbage around, I mean, there's a significant amount, am I wrong? You guys do a lot of work picking all that up, right?
Yeah, I'm not saying our vendors are perfect, I'm not saying things don't get left.
You said they get fined $100, if that was the case, we'd be, we'd be very wealthy if they were all fined, because they have to be some massive offenders in there. Okay. I'm, I'm only saying, look, you're saying that these are not the bags, and doing this isn't going to change anything, what I would say is if that's the case, then no hard, no foul, we could ban these bags, it doesn't make a difference, no one's the wiser, and we just move on, but I don't, I don't agree, because I, I see this, and I go over there, and I see the bags, and I don't think it's all the shoe filling, what I'm looking here is to, to, to ask staff to come back with something about how we could try to reduce the amount of garbage produced in the Galt Market, if you don't think it's plastic bags, then come back, staff come back and tell me what is, what is the major amount of this garbage, and where does it derive from, and how can we mitigate it, how can we take care of it?
Would it be plausible to assign the individual that cleans up streetscapes as a permanent job, assign him to the market two days a week?
Before you, before Mike answers that, can I tell you that market staff on Tuesday after 2:00 PM, we go out and clean the, these areas here, on Wednesday after 2:00 PM, we go out and clean these areas, and Thursday morning, we do a full cleaning, we also provide the neighborhood in Melody and Glendale, Jackie's cell number to call in case we missed anything, or in case they need us to go in the backyard to clean up anything, so, before, now, if Mike wants to answer, if he wants to have that happen.
It would basically be a trade-off, you know, other areas that were assigned for that position would suffer if we were to divert him two days every week, I mean, he's basically got a route that takes about 10 days, so every, every two weeks, he's hitting everything that he was assigned to do, so if you take four of those 10 days away...
It would be 20, that's a bit long, and, and it sounds like the staff is actually putting a lot more work in by group, hitting it as a group than one individual could take care of.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to suggest something that's not trying to mitigate it on the back end, I'm trying to go upstream and find out what's finding, what's happening in the first place and prevent it from happening, I don't think throwing more bodies at the cleanup efforts is what I'm asking for, I'm trying to prevent there being so much waste created.
Sure, that's, yeah, that's, that's...
I can tell you, if you drove down Glendale Avenue on a windy day, that as far down as almost by the freeway on ramp, you're going to see, looks like somebody just went down the road and just threw, just knocked over a garbage can, it blew all over, and I do absolutely sincerely appreciate the hard work you guys do, because you guys do go out there, and I've seen them out there late in the day, walking with the garbage cans, but I'm telling you what, if I had garbage blowing my front yard every day, which I don't in my yard, I'm just saying that, so this is not coming from personal experience of where I live, but on Glendale, I wouldn't care how well someone come picked up my yard, I don't want trash in my yard for two or three hours until somebody comes along later in the day and picks it up, I'm just saying, so, this has been a long time thing, a complaint for many people, they do appreciate what Jackie has done and what Armando has done with giving the numbers and trying to mitigate this, but I am trying to be preventative here and not reactive.
I understand, and I appreciate, I was just trying to hit all areas of, you know, while it's up for discussion, a lot of ideas that might work and help, so, if counsel doesn't have any other comments or questions, Mr. Lozano?
I, I have a question, and I think this is more for staff, but, has anybody contacted the vendors to see, to let them know that this is an issue, these, the bags, and to see if there's an alternative way to, that they can package things, that sounds very elementary, but I was just out at the market last Tuesday, and every single vendor uses these non-recyclable bags, I don't necessarily have a problem with, with they use, but if it's an issue, how about getting with our partners that come and service our community and ask them what they suggest, they may have the, an answer.
We have not spoken with them yet, we wanted to get direction from counsel on what, this was a vague discussion to discuss plastic bags, and we were hoping you'd give us direction on how you'd like us to proceed, and that is, if you want them gone, we would start taking the, the steps and meeting with the vendors, notifying them that this is up for discussion.
I, I, I think that we start there, I mean, this is their business that they're running, this is a business model they've been using for many, many years, as long as I've been going to, not just this market, but others, and this is going to significant, whatever happens out of this, if a ban of those plastic bags happens, it's going to significantly, significantly impact their business, and I want to make sure that we are doing what we can ahead of time, so that we don't have an issue with vendors having to, you know, take on more costs in their business without any input, that's just my thought.
So just to be clear, what I wasn't suggesting either is to bear, put an extra burden on the vendors, I'm asking for us to come up with a way to provide recyclable bags when you come in the market at the gates, saying, please, we encourage you to bring your own, my thought would be like Save Mart, if you were to ask Save Mart how significantly their business has been impacted when California said you can no longer give you bags unless people pay for them, they're going to tell you that their, their business hasn't been impacted at all, I mean, they charge for a bag, if you don't want a bag, you bring your own, most people bring their own, I know my wife does, and I do, we bring our own, or I just carry my items out, for people to be encouraged to bring their own bag, or for us to provide them with a recyclable bag at the gate, and offset those costs with staff reduction, or possibly, maybe we get with Cal Waste, and I don't want to speak for them, but maybe they'd be interested in co-sponsoring something where they could provide a certain cost of recyclable bags that we offer to the people that are coming in the market, all I'm trying to do is eliminate the vendors from handing out those bags, I'm not asking them to repackage their product, and I understand that you would say there might be some trash still from those, but that's what I'm asking, so, I'm not looking to impact their business, other than just trying to keep our community cleaner.
So, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
We have one public comment, Ken Lee.
Thank you.
Evening, councilmembers, the bags are a problem down there, and Galt can have a marketing opportunity by selling cloth bags, they say, I shop the Galt Market Tuesdays and Wednesdays, if you sell them to the vendors at, at a cost, they can, they can charge a dollar like everybody else. a dollar like everybody else does, the reusable cloth bags. And no vendors in the flea market wholesale reusable bags. They all sell those disposable bags. And wholesalers need trash, the trash bags to bag up the wholesale account to buy a lot of stuff. They don't throw away, they don't throw around the big shop, the big garbage bags. So I would ban all plastic bags because they do need it, because they don't have enough cartons to put the stuff in.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there any other counsel from, oh, sorry, is there any other comment from council?
Not on this item.
Mr. Papino?
No, I, I think it, I mean, yeah, we have an issue, and I think it, a little research going the direction of how we can think about phasing those out requires a discussion with the vendors and to see what kind of cooperation we could get in phasing it toward a, you know, no single-use bag world. So that would be my only direction, the staff, is to research that direction.
And that's what I would support. I, I would just like to ask what Mr. Lozano and Mr. Papino have said so far, is just staff can reach out to the vendors, tell them that we're visiting this idea, there's a discussion ongoing, what input do they have? And then maybe reach out to our waste provider as a partner and see what their input is on this matter. And then come back to council at some point in the near future and say, this is what we got for you, and this is how we think it could happen, if it could happen, and so on and so forth. And that's what I'm looking for, is just to keep the ball moving forward is all.
Yeah. Can we also look at, you know, reusable bags, how much, I would think it would be kind of pricey, but it's worth looking into if we're doing the research. You know, if it said GALT Market on it, it was an advertising thing, maybe that's a, maybe that's a good approach.
So do you want reusable bags or recyclable bags?
I would like to see both. Something that we can have that's recyclable, just to, so that we know that it's, you know, environmentally friendly on the back end, but also reusable that possibly could be sold with, with marketing, like Mr. Lee suggested. I would like to see that cost as well.
Can, can we sell the higher-end reusable bags as an advertising for local businesses? Is that even legal?
Sorry, I didn't want to answer that.
Yeah, basically, for lack of a better term, city swag.
City swag, or, or street land, streetslam bags, booster bags, et cetera, et cetera. I know you can't get into baseball or anything like that, but maybe local teams.
Maybe that's how we fund the bags, is we have businesses front the cost.
Or, or if...
We have five, five businesses on a bag.
If there's any profit made on the bags, it could go towards local baseball, youth baseball teams.
And softball, right. Can you, can I call Jackie up here to discuss the...
Sure.
We already have bags for sale, just so you know.
Okay.
So we started selling the reusable bags probably three years ago. We do promotional on our social media that these bags are available to our customers, as well as, we gave them out at the last Friday market, as well as the Saturday market as a promotional to encourage people to purchase our bags at the flea market, plus to go visit the flea market. So we do have that opportunity available right now.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other council comment, do you have everything you need? Armando?
Yeah. As soon as she posts the video, I'll go back and listen exactly.
So could we just reiterate the direction, I believe it was, to gather input from vendors, notify them that we are discussing this, the, the phasing out of such bags, gather any ideas that they may have, and bringing back the cost of usable bags, which I guess you guys already know, and recyclable bags.
Yes.
And then lastly, how that would be implemented, how a phasing out process would take place. Is that right?
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you, sir.
There was a mention of Cal Waste, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mike. And reaching out to Cal Waste and see what their input or their participation would be, or just, you know, any data from them would be helpful.
Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to H3, GALT Commission on Aging Bylaws. Report by Mr. Solis.
This will, the presentation will actually be given by Monica Lopez, Recreation Supervisor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This report is in regards to the Commission on Aging wanting to update their bylaws. The recommendation is adopting a resolution amending the GALT Commission on Aging bylaws. The Commission on Aging bylaws were adopted by City Council on October 3, 2017. At the January 17, 2023 City Council meeting, Commissioners Robert Balleier and Andrea Johnson spoke to City Council during public comment with a request to have the Commission on Aging bylaws changed to the same wording that the GALT Youth Commission bylaws have in regards to advocacy. At the March 22, 2023 Commission on Aging meeting, staff received consensus from the Commission on Aging to bring forward a staff report and resolution to update their current bylaws. The proposed redlined and clean versions of the Commission on Aging bylaws are attached for review and consideration. And the only fiscal impact to this action and that cost is absorbed in the existing budget appropriations.
Thank you very much. Is there any comment or questions by City Council?
I have a question. On page forty-seven of the agenda packet, I don't know which it is on yours, but one of the redlined versions talks about the duties of the commission under A1. It's slashed out. The purpose of the Commission on Aging is to set, is to act as a forum for any and all matters of the concerns to seniors of the city. And then it looks like added is, the Commission on Aging is responsible for being responsive to the community and serving as an advocate to the City Council on senior issues. I am a fan of getting some verbiage about advocacy in there. My question would be, why couldn't we just leave the entire statement? I feel like the first part of it is still relevant. It could be the entire part there. I don't know. Was there a reason that the...
Yes.
You wanted that outage?
Commissioners Balleier and Johnson came to City Council, and we were directed to provide the same language that was in the Youth Commission. So that's what we basically did.
So that's a, that's a consistent with the, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no questions. Anybody else?
We have public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Balleier?
You caught me.
Good evening again. Advocacy by the Commission on Aging on behalf of the seniors to the City Council was removed, as Monica said, back in 2017 by the then City Commission. And I was a part of that. I had just joined that commission some, a little previously, previous to that. And in retrospect, I, I decided, I, I thought about it, and I go, well, if the city wanted it removed, so I'll, I'll just vote for its removal because I placed my trust and faith in the city. And I should have voted differently or should have inquired more. So that was a mistake on my part. I regret that. I'm only speaking for myself. I, I believe it's critical that the phrase advocacy by the Commission on Aging on behalf of the seniors to the City Council should be restored for the following reasons. Consistency, as was mentioned, other commissions either have or are being encouraged, i.e. the Youth Commission, to advocate for their clientele to the City Council by city officials. The Commission on Aging should be able to do no less. Presently, the Commission on Aging can only provide a forum for seniors. We can listen to what they have to say, but are limited in our response to act effectively. We're limited to provide them with information about whom they may want to contact on their own to resolve their issues. That's very difficult for seniors that are frail and very old to do, or who fear retaliation and threats of eviction if they speak up. Offer to help them with their correspondence to government agencies, as I have done as a private person, to get results. Failing that, currently, we, per city staff guidance, can only help them in our capacity as a private citizen, not a member of the commission, since advocacy is not now in our current bylaws. It limits our ability as a commission to be effective, as recent history has proven, and is proving now, i.e. the apartment complexes catering to seniors is a case or a cases in point. I respectfully urge the City Council to consider this proposed change to the COA bylaws favorably. Thank you.
Mr. Balleier, would, would you please reiterate exactly where in, are you not looking at the staff report, obviously? No.
No, no, this is my own.
So do you know exactly what item you're pointing to, or just in general?
I'm sorry?
Do you know, do you know actually which, like, is it, you know, under duties, A1 or A2, or are you just saying in general?
I have the bylaws in front of me.
I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Right, I just wanted to see if he was more specific. So...
No, just generally, I favor...
Yeah, let, let me ask you this. In, in recent events, I think it was a good lesson for everybody involved, how delicate the situation can be and how easy it is to step over the line.
Yes.
The bylaws have to serve everybody from here on out because they may not be changed. You know, someone may not be, so it's, it's not just the person that is serving, but it has to protect the city and the people on the commission, as well as advocate for the elderly. That's a very tough line to draw and stay on, and stay behind, I guess. So, you know, I know your intent is, is proper. Do you think the words objectively convey that to anybody that reads it cold?
Our advocacy, the advocacy change that we're seeking is specific to our advocating for the seniors to the City Council, not to any private agents, corporation.
It says, it says here, serving as an advocate to the City Council on senior issues. So that's not what you're looking for?
No, I'm, I'm, no, I'm looking, exactly. I'm, I support, I support what the change is, is speaking to.
Okay, I thought you said you, you were disappointed in your vote.
No, I was disappointed in my vote, not, not on this issue. I mean, not now, but when I first joined back in 2017, when they took it out, I voted in its favor. I now regret having done that. Otherwise, if, if I had been the majority vote on that issue, I would not be speaking to you about this now because we'd already, we'd still have it in, in our bylaws.
Okay, so I'm glad I clarified that. That's great.
Mayor, may I just add that it was voted 5-0 by the Commission on Aging?
Yeah, I just misunderstood. When he came up, he said he was, you know, disappointed in his vote, and then he just started discussing about advocacy. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear, you know?
I was still green at the time, okay? Brightened since then. Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you so much. So if there's no other comments or confusion, I would be looking to adopt a resolution amending the GALT Commission on Aging bylaws. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu. Do I have a second by Councilman Lozano, since he was close? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next is aye communication.
None this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Jakes, city clerks report, none. Kate?
Sorry.
Comments by staff? Did I get that wrong?
No, city clerks report, sorry.
Okay, that's what I thought. You were just jumping ahead on me. So comments by staff?
Yes, let's go with Chief Kalinowski. Good evening, Council. So a couple things. Obviously, we're quickly approaching Police Week, so we'll have two staff members going back to DC for our fallen officers and then to support El Grove on Ty Lenehan. In conjunction with that, we will be participating in the countywide memorial program on Thursday, the state memorial on Monday, and the CHP ceremony on Tuesday. So a lot of activities honoring our fallen coming forward. And our honor guard is actively involved in providing support to the families at the hotels here in Sacramento and with escorts from the airport and so on. It's quite an endeavor on all agencies in the county. The second thing I have is that this afternoon, and I tried to get this on the agenda, but apparently the Assembly Bill we've known about for a while, we're just trying to time our opposition. And so I couldn't get it as an urgency item for you to consider. But the California Police Chiefs Association has put out an action alert on AB 742, which is the ban of police canines. So the California Police Chiefs Association is asking all individual agencies, and if possible, individual cities, to submit opposition letters to the bill banning police canines, Assembly Bill 742 by Jackson. They need to be submitted by May 12. And I will have the city clerk or, or city manager send this email out to the council members if they individually want to prepare a letter. And there is a sample letter that will be provided. For some background, AB 742 would prohibit the use of police canines in the apprehension, arrest of any suspect, or in a manner of crowd control. AB 742 also states definitively that police canines shall not be used in any circumstances to bite. It's passed out of the Assembly Public Safety Committee, which is not a shock because anything anti-law enforcement will, and is currently pending before the Assembly Appropriations Committee. The fate of the bill will be decided on the deadline for fiscal hearings on May 19. CPCA, along with virtually every single major law enforcement association, is currently opposed, including California State Sheriff's Association, PORAC, which is Peace Officer Research Association, and Deputy Sheriff and Police Officers Association. A couple talking points I just want the public to know about, that canines play an irreplaceable role in public safety, both towards the protection of the public and officers. Canines can alert officers to hidden threats that it would otherwise be concealed through incredible senses of smell and hearing. Statistics continually show that an overwhelming majority of incidents involving a canine result in no force, arguably making them one of the best tools for de-escalation. I concur. State use of force laws, department policy, post-training, and large body of case law have all set the standards for canine deployment. Canine teams train constantly. And CPCA, lastly, and most importantly, condemn any racially biased policing or excessive use of force. But banning canines is not a solution to that problem and has a negative impact for public safety, a negative public safety consequence. So we will send this to council. I'll be preparing the letters, the police chief, like the other local agencies will be. And this is likely, based on the update we had a couple weeks ago, going to hit, hit the floor, actually not get killed anywhere along the way. So that's concerning. Anecdotally, I guess, they've said that, you know, these shotgun approaches to banning things all start with the total banning, and then they get to a place that codifies what current policy and case law already is. And so my hope is that that's where we will end in the legislation. But there needs to be some changes, some forced changes to this. I do apologize that I couldn't get this to you sooner, but CPCA is clear for several years that we've been hammered on legislation. And so they have to take the legislation as it comes through the committees and be strategic about its opposition in order to be successful for changes of individual legislation. So that's why we're so late in the game, because they want to be relevant. You're talking to an assembly member more than a week out on an item. They're not, they're not briefed and ready to go. So with that, that's all I have for, tonight for you. Sorry for the wordiness.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
Chief Kalinowski, I have a quick question for you. You mentioned Police Week, and you said about honoring our fallen, and when you were talking about that, it made me, it reminded me of something I've been meaning to get with you. Could you update the council at some point where we're at with the process? We, you and I had a conversation a while back about trying to move the ball forward on the Overpass Memorial for Herminder Graywall. And it seemed like there was a lot of support for it, all the way up to, you know, through the mayor of El Grove even, but I haven't heard...
So I've been working with our city manager through the assembly person. But what we're, what the gridlock currently is, I understand, is the, I don't want to say it like that. The large number of legislative bills in the state assembly is slowing that process for, for us moving forward. The city manager has asked me for additional background info about Harminder that they can pull together so they can present, but... can pull together so they can present, but unless the city manager wants to add, he did indicate that they were going to have a little bit of delay, but we'll continue to push on that item.
So it's still in the mix?
Yes, absolutely. Our memorial committee, the vice mayor has participated in some of our meetings, continues to work on topics regarding monuments and, and related topics to support both the Ton and the Graywall family.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might add, if there are any letters of support from individual council members, you're welcome to submit those to me, I have a login on the legislative portal for the city, so I'm able to upload letters of support by bill. So if you want to forward those PDFs to me, if you are inclined. Next up, Mike Selling, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, again, council. Just wanted to state that our first city household hazardous waste and e-waste event is this Saturday in the morning, and I'm happy to report that all 200 reservations are full, so unfortunately, you know, if there's anybody out there that has some household hazardous waste or e-waste that they want to get rid of, please don't show up to the event at the market grounds on Saturday, there's no additional capacity, is my understanding, from the vendor to do that, but what your options would be, would be to take it to the facility at, in Elk Grove off of Grantline Road and Disposal Lane, that's always available for all GALT residents, or you can hold it for the next event, if that's, if that's an option for you. And we'll be looking, you know, doing debrief on this and whatnot, and see when that timing might be for the next event, so thank you so much.
And now Craig Hoffman, our Community Development Director.
Good evening, council members. So on Monday, we held our first Historic Preservation Committee meeting in three years, and would just like to put it out there, would love a couple other members to that. Currently, we have three, and two of those members live outside the city limits. If you know anyone who lives inside the city limits, would love to get a couple more members on that committee, and Tina's going to be advertising that. With that, that's it, have a great night.
Mr. Hoffman, I have a question. In regards to the comment that Mr. Lee made earlier, could you possibly, as soon as whatever's possible, update the council, or update Mr. Heinz, and he could update the council or whatever, about, we had a discussion a while back about the trucks in Walmart and idling and coming at different hours, and I, you guys worked really hard on that, and I, and I thought that I was kind of, kind of mitigated with this, with the management at that point, was it not?
We did, in fact, at the last Planning Commission meeting, we held a workshop on that topic, had a lot of discussion about it, and I don't know if the comments are coming based upon responding to an article in the newspaper, Mr. Lee wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting, but I think we've gotten to a point where we're in a good place, we've got a new store manager, Craig Hodges. It's different, you know, we've seen a changeover of, of a lot of store managers at Walmart over the last five years, and so I think we're seeing some good, some good changes, a very responsive group, and we're.
Well, maybe I can reach out to Mr. Lee, or maybe you could just ask him if that's coming from, you know, from the public, because I haven't heard any complaints about it personally, and I usually hear my stuff.
No, I know.
But I would like to find out if that is in fact a real thing, and if it is, we can look into it.
Yeah, we, we held a workshop, we put out a notice, surrounded it, sent out notices to the surrounding 500-foot properties. We did get one comment letter, and it's somebody I've been working with, but we didn't have the public show up, so, you know, public participation is very important, and it's a little discouraging when you have a public workshop and no one shows up to, to comment, you're playing off your back feed a lot.
Apathy is well alive, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Craig.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Finance Director Matt Boring.
Good evening, I just want to provide an update, the city is resuming our water shut-offs for delinquent utilities. We've been working to try and get the message out to all of our customers, we put it on a couple of their utility bills so far, and in early March, we sent out notices to anyone that was delinquent, just to let them know that we were resuming those policies, and it was included on our Connect with GALT newsletter that went out last week, so we've been trying to let everyone know. We're working, finance staff has been working hard with our public works staff, I believe we're going to start issuing notices to people with delinquent accounts starting tomorrow, trying to get them extra time, and time it so that way, the notices will start going out tomorrow, our shut-offs for accounts that are still delinquent will begin May 16th and 17th, so we're trying to time it so they have ample time to come in and either pay their delinquent utilities, or come and make a payment plan arrangement with the city, and that way, if they do have their water shut off, it won't be on a Friday or the end of the work week, so they have to have the water shut off all weekend. Currently, we have probably about 500 accounts that are still delinquent that will be noticing. It's much higher than normal, because we haven't done any noticing or turned off any accounts since 2019, so we plan on taking at least two days to do all the notices, and we have two days scheduled for shut-offs. So we're hopeful that with the, the notices have gone out, and when we start putting the door tags on, that we'll get more customers that come in, so we won't have to turn the utilities off.
If I may add, Matt, I just wanted to let the council know that all utility services billed by the city are sent to the customer on a single bill. If someone did not pay their bill for the entire pandemic, they would owe the entire back amount, unless it was recovered through a property tax assessment in the interim. There's no interest charge to the customer when payment arrangements are made, the only charges the customer will see in addition to the charges for services are any penalties that may have been assessed once we resume normal service, I believe that was in early March of this year. Each payment plan is personalized to the customer to allow payments on outstanding balances without jeopardizing the customer's ability to stay current on new charges for services. The payment plans are available for a period of up to 12 months, and as Director Boring mentioned, we have 502 accounts that are delinquent, with a cumulative outstanding balance of $650,000. We're hopeful the customers will come in and make payments, or set up a payment plan before shut-offs begin on May 16th.
Thank you very much, city manager, for the clarification, and I appreciate, I'm sure everybody does, that working with the citizens the best you can, that's a lot of leniency with no interest in payment plans, and working with each individual, that's a lot of extra work to try and work and help each citizen out, so I really appreciate it.
I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Heinz, because I was going to ask, thank you for giving me those answers to those, those were my questions. So I guess with that number you gave me, the question I think you didn't answer, but I think you did by the figure you gave me, was, do we have a lot of people that didn't pay for the entire length of the pandemic? It would seem that number is very high, it would seem like there would be.
We have 502 accounts, and we have how many customers?
Approximately 7,500 utility customers, so the amount per customer will vary. Some of them were able to recover through property tax assessments, and that's an option for some customers, so some of them have received some payments throughout the entire time. We haven't shut any off, we had the cyber attack at the end of 2019, which we weren't able to do all the meter readings, so we had to estimate the utility, utility usage, and we didn't shut any accounts off, and that rolled into the pandemic where there was the mortuary on discontinuing water services.
Right.
So the amount per customer varies from, some could be less than $100, some could be several thousand if they haven't made any payments since 2019, and.
Technically, because they pay on one bill, this is technically not just water, if they didn't pay their city of GALT bill, that's, that's waste and water, so technically, they'd be delinquent on waste as well, right?
Yeah, we bill for all the services, so you don't get a separate bill, you get a bill, your statement will show the different charges.
So my question would be, if you have a city, let's just say you have a resident who hasn't paid in, I don't know, let's just say it's six months, okay? So more than likely, they just didn't pay their city bill in six months, which is water and garbage, right? So we are going to institute water shut-offs, are we instituting, like, waste, like, we're going to pick up their carts and they don't have waste removal anymore too, or we just, we just leave that in play? I'm just, valid question.
I'm not sure about waste, I know there's water, we have a storm drain charge, a sewer charge, and the garbage, and the only one that staff would implement is the, the water charge. I'm not aware that we contact Cal Waste to pick up any carts, or if they stop collecting garbage from residents.
Is it going to be a lengthy process to recoup this money through property tax if we should? Because my thought is, if this is the amount that's out there, if someone, unless they were just really irresponsible, but if someone genuinely couldn't pay their bill during the pandemic, and they let it get far that behind, they're probably not going to be able to pay it now, I mean, I just don't see that happening, so I, my guesstimate is, my hunch is, we're going to be having to do the whole property tax thing on a lot of these.
The property tax is an annual process we go through, the county assessor's office gives us a window of opportunity that we can submit delinquent utility bills that they can add to the assessments, so we do that on an annual basis.
Okay. I do want to say, I appreciate staff, you know, everybody working, trying to do what we can to work with people to set up payment plans and whatever, to make these things square again, so thank you. Thanks for answering my questions, Matt and Mr. Heinz, thanks.
Mr. Lozano. I just have one quick question. In terms of their delinquent accounts and the account holders on those, I've heard you say a couple of times, come in, come in, is there a way that they can call in and use a debit card, like their bank account card, to make payments for those of our customers that are not, not as mobile?
Yeah, sure, so if you can, I believe you can pay online through the website, there's a portal that I'll send you to. If you call in, we'll send you to, it's an automated system, we don't take the card numbers and process it manually for them, due to the PCI compliance act, because we don't want to retain those numbers.
Right.
But there are several options, we have the Dropbox, they can drop payments off, pay by phone, or over the internet.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Any.
No.
I'll just thank you for all of your work, we knew this was going to come, this is one of the very foreseeable consequences of shutting down the economy, and, I mean, tough road getting through it.
All right, city attorney? City clerk? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to conclude by letting the council know that we conducted two successful state-of-the-city public forums last week, we had a total of about 25 to 30 folks for each session. It was a good opportunity to have an interactive session regarding the state of the city, and we had some very lively discussions amongst the citizens that attended. I personally learned a lot about the city's attraction to pickleball, and, and now I'm a bit more educated as to the nuances of pickleball, and its rabid following here in the city of GALT.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm.
That has come up in council comments or council meetings several times in the past, so thank you for that, and I'm glad to see that it was attended well, and people were lively, that's always a good thing, because outreach is difficult. So with that, we move on to comments by council members, future agenda items, Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank you for public comment, and I'd also like to thank you, everyone who come to this council meeting during the chamber. I also like to thank you for the staff, their hard work, their good report. I attended the chamber April luncheon at Papa's and Wings, Mr. Len Reed, Reynosa, gave us a very informative information about the future and protecting your asset, like in how you make your bill, and all, all this stuff, and that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papino.
Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
Just reminding everybody, the Saturday Market, I was told by park staff, we have like an unprecedented number of vendors signed up, so it should be a really good event, the weather looks like it's going to be good, not too hot, so look forward to people out there checking that out, and just want to thank Armando for his crews out there, trying to stay on top of everything with the weeds, the grass, and Public Works as well, for you guys doing that, so that's pretty much all I have. Actually, one more thing, could we get a, last council meeting, I asked for, to look into the key to the city thing for Mr. Houck, and I know that it's only been one meeting, but I just wanted to keep the ball moving forward, I know, I don't want to wait too long, because he just did pass, is there any update on that at all?
I just ordered the plaque, so once we get it in and.
Okay, will we be reaching out to the family to arrange something for, okay, thank you, Tina.
And I believe the service is May 20th on a Saturday, if you wanted to include that, I don't know, but.
Okay, yeah, it's May, May 20th, is it, is it, where is it at?
It's in, I'm sorry, let me get that for you. Pressure's on. Everybody's looking at me.
I don't think it was in GALT, though.
No, it was in Lodi, at a church in Lodi, and so I'm going to have to pass that along to council next time, I apologize.
I think it's St. Peter Lutheran is where it's going to be held, I think, all right. All right, thank you, chief.
I'll mention it again when we're at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, a few things, attended the CAPS volunteer appreciation luncheon, PD did an awesome job, again, as always, thank you, chief, and the staff that put that together. Shred Event was the first one I've been to in a while, that was well done, easy maneuver, there weren't a lot of people there, I was there early, but it was very well organized, so if you could pass on a things to Rose, and Tina, and everybody, that was a part of that. Had the opportunity on the 22nd to watch baseball and, and T-ball here in town, and kids were having a great time, and received positive feedback from a lot of parents about the T-ball program here, so good work, Parks and Rec staff, it was very well done, and we actually saw three T-ball games, so very well done, appreciate your work on that. Went to the pop-up play in the park, the Peter Pan, thank you to Jackie, right, for putting that on to get a chance to say hi to her, but it was pretty well attended at Community Park, and I would say probably about 50 people there, it was, it was very well done. Then, lastly, I had the opportunity to attend the Sacramento County District Attorney's Outstanding Citizens Award last Friday. Six citizens involved in four cases were honored and awarded. Galton George Cruz was recognized for his life-saving, his saving an adult female from being raped, and possibly worse, in front of her two-year-old daughter in the, in a local park, back in November of '22. George sprang into action and put his own safety at risk while at the park with his two-year-old daughter and his mother, he could have very easily walked away and called the police, but he didn't, he subdued the attacker, and the person was convicted eventually. So, and I'm glad that the city manager's moving forward on honoring him appropriately, and look forward to, to meeting with his family again, and, and everybody to recognize his, his efforts. And then lastly, truly lastly, I mentioned earlier, but Saturday, the Saturday Market Seco will have a booth out there, everybody, especially our senior community, because I know we've had a lot of transportation issues within our senior community that need to be addressed, and, and will continue to, but it'd be nice to have that folks go out and, and give them the feedback that they need, so that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the public comment, I really appreciate it, you know, Measure R, and Mr. Hoffman mentioned another committee that could use people, it's, it's one thing to say something online, it's, has 10 times the weight, when you come up here and speak to everybody all at the same time, and it's 100,000 times has more weight, if you actually get involved and get on a committee or commission, you'll have a direct impact in your community, so I encourage everybody to do so, it's, you'll find it a positive experience. I want to thank staff and the city manager for working with the local business, I think you were exceedingly generous in trying to provide her the needs, the things she needed during the Saturday Market, and the police as well, to accommodate her, I was, he was just quite generous, I wanted to mention that, and I was also at the CAPS meeting, it was very good to appreciate the people that do, they put in a lot of hours for the community, and I hate to say it this way, but they actually save us a lot of money, and they take care of traffic, and a lot of mundane tasks with much joy, Byron is, is a pleasure to be with anytime you're with him, so if you ever see Byron, I'm sure you'll be happy when you leave chatting with that gentleman. And with that, I would like to close the meeting at 7:53 PM. Good night.